You can tell it's summertime, can't you? I just want to just keep going a little bit. Welcome to our board study meeting tonight. We'd like to excuse John Rinci and Bruce Jardine, who are both out of town. Thank goodness everybody else showed up. I told superintendent maybe I should come and sit and all this go home. Call it a wash. Never. Let's start, Janice and Kelly, with some information on the USBA Delegate Assembly and the legislative session information. I'll let you two arm wrestle.
It was a very interesting experience. I think Kelly, your superintendent, and I felt that there was there were a lot of really good, smart people there with different opinions. And they worked it out and did the best they could with their priorities. And the biggest focus was on the removal of the earmark. And that's where the heavy discussion existed. But I think the priorities, they've kind of refined down and done a good job. They've listed Utah as an educational leader, wanting to have a working group that meets regularly between the educational leaders and the legislative leaders. So that it isn't a one-year thing. It's ongoing, so they know where education stands and they can be responsible for that. So I think that was a really excellent thing. Their effort is to support every student. And then they established how they would implement the plan for the economic stabilization account. It was very, it strikes you as very complex when you're there. And I loved it. One of the moderators said, "If you think I understood everything they just said, I didn't." And I thought that was very honest and courageous of her because it's a very complex system, the financing of education in Utah. What would you add, Kelly?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is there was discussion on whether or not we needed to include the fact that USBA, that we support the removal of vouchers, but we didn't include that in our priorities. And then the point of, what would I say? The Delegate Assembly was quite divided on SJR 10. So three school districts, Salt Lake School District, Provo School District, and Champaign, I think. They had requested to have a discussion on SJR 10. And those three school districts had a scripted statement of the fact. So currently, USBA with the Superintendent's Association and the Business Administrators Association, so the JLC, in 2023, they decided to conditionally support SJR 10 if certain things were met, including a concrete plan to increase funding beyond inflation, an emphasis on local control and reduction in administrative demands, the elimination of unfunded mandates, a reasonable tax rate policy. And so that was at the end of the 2023 session. And so during the 2024 session, you know, most of us have seen that none of those conditions have been looked at or met or talked about or willing to discuss or any of those things. So those three school boards created statements to say, "Hey, as a JLC, we need to withdraw our conditional support." And then they had three members of the, one from Juab, one from NiVo, and one from Alpine, talk about why they wanted to continue to support SJR 10. And a lot of their reasons were that they felt like we have cultivated relationships with our legislators. And if we withdraw our support, that the legislators now won't speak with us. And it was interesting because it was coming off a position of fear that if we don't support it, because even though we've conditionally supported it, apparently the legislature has touted that as as public education supports SJR 10 because UEA has come out against SJR 10. I think Utah PTA is against SJR 10. So with our conditional support, it makes it look like we're in fact supporting it. So the Delegate Assembly went through, I don't know, how many votes did we do? Lots of votes on whether or not we were going to oppose SJR 10, if we were going to take no stance on SJR 10, if we were going to conditionally support SJR 10. Then we voted again on no stance on SJR 10. And every time it came back almost 50-50. So there's a lot of people who just really feel like if we withdraw the support, we're going to ruin all the relationships we've built. And then there's a lot of people, because we do feel that the legislature hasn't tried to work with us at all. So that was, that took probably an hour and a half until the meeting was over at 12:00. And then the meeting was over and there was no consensus made. And so it went back to, we are conditionally supporting SJR 10. But it was mainly because it was very divided. So our hope is that the legislature will work with us. But I think most board members are feeling less than hopeful that that will happen during the session or even in this interim period.
Anything else?
It was an experience, for sure.
I've heard a few things.
So I guess I think the moral of the story is we still all, as a board, as education leaders, as parents, really need to reach out to our legislators over this next year and just, I don't want to say challenge them, but really say, "Hey, what are your goals here? And you're saying one thing and doing another." And so, and that we really feel that it's important to support public education and that the Utah Big Sal Scholarship isn't doing public education any better.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate both of you jumping in at full speed all the time and putting it to the lab.
I have to say, it is a real benefit and privilege to be at something like that with superintendent or board member of Larson. You feel the support and you feel the unity. And it was, it was very good to be there with them.
Well, thank you. Thanks for your reports. Superintendent, please.
Yes, before I get into some of the positive or the happenings of the district to update the board, I want to just echo what Janice said. It is a privilege to attend those meetings with you two. We have two board members representing the board very well in those meetings, and I want to thank them both. I enjoy our association. I've got quite a list here, and I'll move through it very quickly, but there's so many good things happening. The first thing I want to acknowledge is that our own Mr. Dave Hells had a birthday today. So I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize his birthday today. That's kind of a big deal. He made it another year. Happy birthday, Mr. Hells. We follow that up with a bit of bittersweet news, and I've already let you know, Board, but Sherry Hyder has announced her official retirement for Weaver School District. And we are very sad to see Sherry go. She's given a research school district her heart and soul for 36 years. And she's going to be very, very difficult to replace. We will hold an open house for her on June 18th here in this very room from 2:00 to 4:00. We'd like to send her off feeling valued and treasured. And we're really excited for what's next for her, though. She deserves a nice break, and she's got lots of plans on the docket. I wanted to give a shout out to Nick Harris and his wonderful DTNL team. Some of them are in the room. We had an epic, another epic Learn conference. It was absolutely fabulous. I won't steal his thunder because he's going to be before you here in just a minute talking about the focus of that Learn conference for, over 400 of our teachers enjoyed last couple of days. But it was all on artificial intelligence. So I'm going to have him give the update on it. But I just want to thank that group. I think that was one of the best events I've seen. You just keep raising the bar, you guys. So thank you for that. If you've driven by Roosevelt Elementary, it is no more. There's a stack of bricks out on the sidewalk if you want one. We're hoping the neighborhood kids don't pick them up and use them on TH Bell over the summer. But it is officially demolished. And we're excited about the new building that is going up on that plot of land. So good things happening there for that community. Our graduation ceremonies were just stellar. I want to make sure I publicly acknowledge the great work of each of our principals at each of our high schools and their graduation committees. They were just wonderful community events, each and every one of them represented Weaver School District very well. And then, Board, just really quickly, I wanted to give you an update. I've talked to President Whitson about this and a couple of members about this as well that have had questions come to them. We are undergoing quite an reorganizational effort at the district level. And one of the reasons for that was when we had our legislative audit in 2021, one of the recommendations was that we look at our operational effectiveness. How effective and efficient are we at the district level? And are we providing the support that is needed to our schools, all the way down to the classroom level? And as we've gone through that process, we've also had some employees come to us asking some questions and asking for clarification on their roles, their salaries, and things like that. And so over the last year, we have gone about reorganizing to provide some equity and consistency at each of our departments. And I just want to make you aware of that. You notice that we have a director at each department. We have an assistant director. And then from there, we have created a new position called facilitator. Facilitators are employees that work district hours, district office hours, 7:30 to 4:30. And I've got a description of each of these on your agenda. And they work to support more global initiatives in our district, the facilitators. Underneath the facilitator, we have our coordinators. And our coordinators will be working more to support at the school level. And you'll notice, I won't go into the details, but you'll notice that each of those positions has a little bit of different pay compensation package attached to it. After coordinators, we have what are called teacher specialists. And these would be folks that work here at the district level but also support specializing in various specific areas of our district. An example of that would be a curriculum specialist over math, the math curriculum in our district. So I wanted you to understand the why, first of all. We are trying to get more support to our school leaders, to our teachers, to our students. And we also realized, as we did a deep dive, that we have many different salaries attached to those positions and the individuals in those positions. So we wanted to make sure that we streamlined and that there was transparency, there was equity. And we're working department by department. We have a couple more to go. We've had Student Services so far. Special Education has gone through kind of that process of creating that structure in their department. And, you know, anytime you restructure or riff positions, it always causes a little bit of fear and trepidation in the ranks. But one of the things that we're making sure of is we want to take care of our people. And we're making sure that every employee lands in a position that's good for them and for the district. Any questions on that? I'd love to go into more detail on.
So like in Student Services, what were those four people? Because now we have four facilitators. So remind me what they were before.
Yeah, so we had, we have four coordinators, Kelly, and then hired a fifth coordinator, a behavior coordinator recently. Those five positions now are actually going to be facilitator positions. So the coordinator positions are gone away because in that department, it is going to be a department that supports more global issues in our district, okay? Prevention, mental health, those types of things, okay?
Good question.
And you can see on the agenda that, you can see the hours associated with each one, stipends, how many days we ask them to work in the summer. Now things are a little bit more streamlined, and it also provides a trajectory for advancement within the department as well.
My next question is, so when it says educator pay, is that based on their step in lane? And then they get the additional percentage on top of that? So each coordinator or facilitator still could be different depending how long they've been in the district, how much education.
Perfect, yep, accurate, yep. Appreciate that. That's all I've got, President.
Let's have some updates from the departments and start with Jennifer Warren, please.
So superintendent and Board, most of the month. Stand over here rather than mess with it. We just wanted to give a quick update. With House Bill 182, the Student Survey Amendments Bill, there were some requirements that we needed to or we will need to implement for registration for the coming school year. And we thought it would be helpful for you to have a little bit of information regarding this House bill and the changes. So the changes that came into effect for student surveys are now that we need to have prior consent for each of the surveys that we administer. So when we're speaking about these surveys, we're talking about the SHARP survey, Panorama survey, as well as the school climate survey. And really, in terms of those, the important and critical piece is that we are informing parents there will be a consent for each of those as part of registration that outlines what the purpose is of the surveys. It really is to look at the well-being of our students and look at reducing risk and enhancing protection and services and supports to our students. So each of those surveys will have a consent form. In addition, there will be access to the questions for those surveys. So then that way, parents will be able to preview the content. We will still administer the surveys at the same time of year as we previously have done. So with Panorama, it's in the fall and in the spring. SHARP will be in the spring. But it is just part of registration that we wanted to include that consent in advance. The surveys are critical to us just in that we utilize those for grant funding. It's also reporting requirements through USBE. We are also, through House Bill 84, the school safety required to have early warning identification systems. And so these are some of the tools that we utilize for those early warning systems.
I was just going to say, so like when a parent goes in to register their kid, we've got like a line item of all the things that we have to check off and mark. So that will be one thing.
That will be a doc. Each survey will have a separate document.
So there'll be like three separate documents.
Yes, that outlines the purpose of the survey, the content of the survey, and links to the questions.
So you can't get through registration without?
You have to say yes or no.
Yeah, so there will be a no. It's not just an opt-in, it's a yes or a no.
Yeah, it has to be informed consent.
Do we know, like, I was at a PT meeting at Orion this year when we were talking about the school survey climate. And I know the principal there said, "It's like a handful of parents who opt out every year." Do we know what the percentage is district-wide that typically opts out? And are we worried we're going to have no?
Yeah, Sherry might know that.
We just talked about, and she gave me the numbers.
Yeah, it's less than 1%.
It's less than 1%? So I guess, no. So I'm just interested, maybe after registration, I would be interested to see if that number changes. I do think like most, I know that there was some hubbub a couple of years ago with some of the questions. And most of the principals went out and sent samples of the questions. Because, you know, stuff circulates on social media and parents get all worried. I think a big thing is, a lot of parents don't understand what we're using the surveys for. So I think that will be great. But yeah, I'm just interested to see if those numbers change at all.
I think that would be.
I mean, I hope not, but.
I hope not either, because really what we're looking at is who are those students who are in need of academic or other potential behavioral support and assistance? And so we're looking at things like, "Do you have self-management skills? Do you have social awareness, emotional regulation, grit?" Like, we're looking at building those skills in our students. And so it's beneficial through an early warning system to be able to identify.
I'm just curious of like, any sort of like campaign on our part to say why it's so important? Because I know there's, the parent groups out there that pushed this bill are the ones that are worried about it for no good reason. But they're mostly worried that their kids' information gets shared. I think that's the biggest one. Or how dare you ask my kid a personal question? So I think a good educational, you know, even before the registration paperwork, because I know a lot of parents, there's an overwhelming amount of stuff at registration. And so you end up scanning and just clicking.
We do have, our CTCs are doing pretty robust, like why we, why the SHARP survey is valuable and what information does that provide? So we absolutely can do that as a district as well.
Thank you. Dr. Peterson, please.
Keep trying, keep trying.
Okay, ooh, there we go. You're going to hear a lot from me tonight, so get used to it. It's our annual budget hearings. By law, we have to have a hearing in June where we will finalize the current year budget, which ends June 30th. So we'll finalize the 2023-2024 school year budget. And then we'll approve a work from budget for the upcoming year, the 2024-2025. I will give a presentation. It's a hearing, so I'll give a presentation on some of the highlights and things that are in the budget. And then we have a handout. You received a draft. There have been a slight couple tweaks, and then the presentation is on the front of us. And we'll hand that out so you can follow along. Plus, I'll tape on the screen. We opened it up to public comment. And so there may or may not be a comment on the budget. We'll see. We're prepared to answer or to address anything along those lines. Another thing is, we are going to go into, we're going to put on a local building authority hat again. And prior to that, there's, it is a little confusing. We're going to ratify a resolution authorizing the issuance of sale of up to $118 million worth of bonds. And then we have another figure out there called 60 million. This $118 million bond was a part of a parameters resolution that we approved clear last October. We approved a parameters resolution. $118 million is what's left on the $279 million of voter-approved, voter-approved GO bonds. Because of the time element, we're going to go, we're going to go for our last portion of that. We did a little bit in January of that $118 million. And we're going to go for the final, it's like 40%. We did 60% in January, 47% next week. We're going to settle, so it gets in before the end of fiscal year. And our bond council, Ryan Vierke, said to legally dot our i's and cross our t's. We have to ratify the resolution that was approved November 10th. So that's an agenda item for you. So it seems a little confusing, and it is. And then, I'm sure after you explain it to everybody, it'll be. Yeah, well, the ratification, we'll just do it because our bond council said to. And then when we adjourn, when we, am I, recess or adjourn? When we recess from our school board, and we will then convene as local building authority, I have another hearing, another presentation for the issuance of up to $60 million. We expect to issue about $56 million. But we are still keeping the language the same, up to 60. And then I have a presentation on what we're going to use that for and why. This is now required by Senate Bill 86 that was passed in the last session, that when you do a lease revenue bonds, you need two hearings. One hearing, they're both standalone. One hearing we had last May, we take input on potential economic impact. There is no potential economic impact. We had ignore input. And the second thing, second hearing, which we're having today, is just what are we planning on doing with the lease revenue bonds? And so we present that. And it should go pretty smooth. My presentations are not long. And of course, I have an awesome spreadsheet that's turned into a PDF, we're going to get. And then that is all the business that I have. And so it's basically a budget hearing, ratification. And then we, as a board, authorize the local building authority to act on the 60 million. And then we become a local building authority. We have a hearing, and then we approve the resolution as a local building authority. So boom, 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 boom. Yeah, so that's why you're going to hear from me.
Senate Bill 86 is the one that capped the lease revenue bonds? Is that what it did?
They capped it at 200 million. So, yeah, 200. So we're well below the cap, yeah. Okay, that's all I have, President.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Harris.
Hello, Board. President Whitson, Superintendent Batters. I appreciate you giving me a few minutes to talk about artificial intelligence. I like to bring swag to my presentations. So my amazing assistant Blake is passing out some learn swag because we missed you at the conference. We'll be sure to invite you next time. This, the, today's discussion kind of stems from a little quick discussion that President Whitson and I had at the CTE Expo in May. We were just sort of talking about artificial intelligence and the way that it's going. So I thought that it would be really good to spend a few minutes and just really quickly talk about AI. It's a bit of a challenge to sum up artificial intelligence in eight minutes, but I'm going to give it my best shot. So when we talk about artificial intelligence, what we're really talking about is generative AI, things that, you know, the tools that generate. And how does it help schools? So what, the direction we'd love to go, the thing we want to really think about it as a teacher's assistant, helping with those creative and administrative tasks. Like Gina said, every year, we put on the Learn Conference, which is an amazing conference for, to help teachers utilize educational technology. Some forward-thinking people way before me had this thing going, and we're just perpetuating it and trying to make it the best that it can be. This year, like Superintendent Batters said, we had almost 400 people show up. We had more than that sign up, but about 400 showed up last Wednesday and Thursday. You know, during their summer with no pay, almost 400 teachers show up. And I think they show up for the food. But they, they, each year when we do it, we try to create a theme. We knew that AI was going to be big. So about a year ago, a year and a half ago, we figured our theme would be something around AI. This year's theme was In Vision. And, you know, we were able to, because we knew we were thinking about AI, we were able to have one of the nation's premier AI, teaching with AI experts come and teach our teachers. His name's Eric Kurtz. Eric Kurtz does presentations all over the nation. And so he was at Weaver High presenting. He blew everyone's mind. One of the things he showed was this picture from the Jetsons. So when I was a little kid, I watched this cartoon. This is the last episode of the first season. And, you know, you can see that they got some things right. You can see the kids there and desks. They probably even have little Chromebooks on their desks. They, a couple of things they got wrong, that is not, you know, that's a chalkboard behind them. And we don't really have those anymore. But one of the things they have, they got wrong, is that robot teacher. We, Eric Kurtz made a really good point in that AI will not replace teachers. And I love to hear him say it. In fact, I took a picture of his slide. This is him giving the presentation. And this is what he said. "AI will not take your job, but people who know how to use AI will." And I don't know if you noticed, but when we, when we ask AI to generate a picture of a bionic teacher, this is what AI came up with. So Eric Kurtz's presentation is titled "The Bionic Educator." He goes into another show that was popular when I was a little kid, was The $6 Million Man, you know? And he talks about the bionic man, the bionic educator. Hopefully, our teachers aren't part robot like this person, like AI made this teacher. But what he says, and the gist of his presentation is, "The best teacher isn't human." The best teacher isn't AI. The best teacher is gonna be a human that uses AI. And, um, so, so what is it that AI really does? What can it do, right? And that's where we really wanna start educating our teachers and helping them, um, utilize AI appropriately and efficiently. Think about the things it can help us do in PLCs, you know, creating agendas, breaking down learning standards quickly, developing conformative assessments. Even lesson plan in, um, it can generate tailored, uh, educational resources and, and I would love to show you that, give you feedback. And, and, and much more, you think about IP goals, E O resources, class newsletters, parent emails. And, and these are all things that would generate ideas. What we want are teachers that will take that idea and use their creativity and their training to make it better, make it their own and become those bionic educators. I've, uh, one of the best things to do is kind of show it in action. So what I did was I, uh, we came up with, uh, a prompt. You know, one of the, one of the things that's gonna be really important, helping our educators use AI, is helping them generate and, and learn to generate the right kind of prompt. So, so here's a prompt, um, you know, one of the things that's hard in education is creating a rubric. So if we asked, um, if we asked AI to help us generate like a four-point rubric in a table to evaluate the argument of essay of ninth grade students. I'll just show you this example really quick. I'll, I'll open up ChatGPT, I'll take that prompt. And I'll go ahead and just paste it in there. So here it is, um, making a four-point rubric in a table format to evaluate the argumentative essay of ninth grade students. So this is something that would take hours for teachers back in the day, you know? Maybe, but you've, you've heard of ChatGPT, I don't know if you've heard of Claude? But, uh, you know, look at the prompt, maybe, uh, if I asked Claude to play the role of a curriculum designer. Help me develop a lesson plan for my ninth grader ELA class. Introducing, uh, you know, this is, this is stuff that I loved to teach when I was an English teacher, semicolons and how to use them in writing. The lesson should be designed to take about forty-five minutes and you can see there's, uh, be sure to include differentiation, some blended learning activities. Uh, we make sure that AI knows all students have access to a Chromebook so they can ask, they can do the, um, proper activities. I'll just open Claude really quick and ask it to do that for me. But one of the things that we don't want teachers to do is just take this and push play, right? That's what the robot in the Jetsons could do. We want the teacher to take this, add their autonomy, add their creativity and make those relationships with the kids and then, but this gets them down the road quickly. Uh, last but not least, um, you've probably heard of text leveling. Here's an article that, that, you know, maybe you've found this awesome article and you think, man, I wanna use this in my class. But I'm teaching third graders and this is way too hard for third graders. So one of the tools we can use is SchoolAI. I can put that article right into SchoolAI and I can ask it to level that test, text, uh, that article at a third grade level. And there it is, uh, making that article, um, to a third grade level. These are things that, um, take, take teachers hours of time. And if we can train them, we can help them, uh, we can save so much time. Now, one of the things that a lot of people wonder is, okay, so why would we have, um, like, like what's the difference between, say, SchoolAI and Claude and ChatGPT? A lot of those, all of these tools use the same language, learning, large language model. They, they all are using ChatGPT. But something like SchoolAI here uses, uh, it is, is designed to have the parameters, safeguards. So it can be used in an educational setting because ChatGPT and Claude, you have to be eighteen years or older to use it. You're, you're supposed to be, right? You click that you are. So, uh, but something like SchoolAI is made for students and for educators and, um, uh, adheres to the DPA and adheres to, uh, student privacy laws. So that's, um, that's just a sense of what we're doing, uh, in AI. So, um, you may or may not know, but we ran a pilot in one of the, in, using two, uh, tools that, uh, UEN just adopted, um, for the state, uh, SchoolAI and Chat for Schools. We used those two tools, uh, during fourth quarter. We asked ed tech coaches to volunteer if they wanted to use them. We had sixty-five teachers, K through twelve, uh, in all four cones, uh, participate in the pilot. They had access to these two tools the entire, uh, entirety of fourth quarter and we asked them for, uh, a beginning evaluation, a mid evaluation and an evaluation at the end. Um, we gave them some professional learning sessions to be able to use it. Um, we also shared with administrators on April fourth and, um, May second, how teachers and administrators can implement AI. So we did a lot of training around AI and I just thought we'd like to see what some of the teachers said after the pilot. This is a sixth grade teacher. She said, "My students really liked it, it was a fun change, I thought the interaction between students and AI was mostly great. I would definitely use it again, I'd like forward to incorporating it more next year." Uh, a high school CTE teacher said, "I think it's so cool. It helped with guidance lessons, self-plans, emailing parents, writing presentations, pretty much everything I wanted, such a great tool." Junior high English teacher, "I really like it, but I need more training on how to write good prompts for the AI." This junior high science teacher, "It's a great tool, helpful in a pinch if I need to adapt something for digital paper or vice versa. Helps me to, uh, duplicate myself to some degree, I would use it regularly going forward." One of our most reluctant teachers to use educational technology from the high school said this. "This isn't going away, so I need to know how to use it." I could not agree more. So, um, so I think the message is, we are not on the bleeding edge. There are other people, other districts that have already adopted some, a school, a tool like SchoolAI, um, through their district. We, we have been cautiously, um, careful. But I think it's safe to say that Gina is not going back in the bottle. We just need to be safe and probably patiently persistent. But I think there's real reason to get excited and I would just probably leave you with those quotes from, uh, from Eric Kurtz. What questions do you have?
So my question is, so in that pilot, so those two, uh, SchoolAI and Chat for Schools, those are tools that our teachers don't usually have access to because of, do we pay for it or is that?
Right, right, we paid for a pilot, um, and, uh, so you pay for a certain number of licenses? And, yeah, and, and you know, technically, uh, all the teachers in the district had access for the last quarter, but we specifically trained those volunteers.
Okay, so then what's our plan moving forward? I saw that Fox Elder has some sort of plan for AI.
That's a great question.
I think, why don't you talk about that, what, what we're thinking?
So we have talked, uh, at length about, um, a couple of options. Number one, um, SchoolAI, uh, over by and large, the sixty-five participants, um, really loved the School, uh, SchoolAI tool. That has a free version that you can use almost everything in it up to seventy-five kids. And so the good news about that is that, um, our elementaries could probably adopt the free version and, um, get moving with, um, limited training, we could really move forward that, that way. Um, what we would love to do in the secondary level is, is have the paid model because that gives you an unlimited number of students. But it also gives you several things like, um, uh, like the ability to join in with Canvas. And, um, what, what Gina and I have talked about and, and others we've talked about, it would be really good to have schools come with some sort of level of readiness. So if they, if we said, okay, if you're willing to go through this, this training, um, and utilize it in the PLCs in this way, then we'll maybe, uh, you could use some TSSA money and we'll use some district money to help you buy licenses. And that way we have trained teachers using it appropriately. What other questions do you have?
Do you, do you have, um, Nick? Do you have any, um, idea how many of our schools would be, would have that readiness level, I mean, can you predict it?
Yeah, I, I, well, I, I can't say for certain, but I, you know, as we've worked with schools, um, our, most of our secondary schools are ready and willing to move, at least, people, you know, a lot of people in the, in the schools. I think some of the tech leaders would be able to take it and be really good examples to the other teachers in the building. I think we could have it in all of our, in all of our buildings, um, in a short time.
Are we thinking this school year?
Yeah.
Okay, our elementaries, so would we roll it out to elementaries since it's free and then hopefully roll it out to secondary in the fall or?
We're looking at, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna work with Robert Purchasing, DAP and purchasing. We, we probably with the paid version, I've gotta go through that process of looking at the R and P process. We're gonna get that rolling, we talked about that, uh, this afternoon. Uh, but again, we kind of have to do an assessment of where everybody's at. And we've got the new leaders moving into new positions and so there will be a little period of time where we assess and then implement. Does that make sense? But we'd like to get it going this school year for sure.
Because I think it's very important to, um, make sure we offer the tool that's the appropriate and, um, the tool that follows the law. Because if we don't, uh, use a tool like SchoolAI, I'm nervous that teachers will just go, jump into ChatGPT and that's a, that's a whole different problem.
So currently we're not encouraging our teachers to use ChatGPT in the classroom?
I'm not encouraging, but we are training them, uh, appropriate prompts, yeah.
I mean, could they use school trust fund money too, like community councils moving forward?
I don't see why not.
What exactly?
I don't see why not. Any other questions? It's exciting, it's a, it's a, um, Gina sent me a text during Eric Kurtz message, uh, and I think she said, "This is equally fascinating and terrifying." And, uh, I think that sums it up right there.
You, you called it a tool, which it is and it's awesome. I remember, you know, as the internet started coming into our lives and people were panicked about they're gonna do away with school libraries, you know, blah, 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 blah. And I think there's a lot of that because people don't understand what a great tool it can be.
Yeah.
We appreciate it.
Thanks.
And giving us a scratch on the surface.
Yeah, yeah, love it, thank you.
We have a couple of new policies and then some that we're gonna just, uh, present during the board meeting for second reading. The new policies is, uh, the first new policy is, which one, which would you like to hear first? Do you care? Everyone, okay.
Just start.
I'll just start. The first new policy is something we hope to make this whole process a lot easier. We've created a policy about creating policies to explain when we're going to present these to the board and, you know, it sounds like we're not making it simpler. But part of the policy allows us to present policies in the consent calendar. So when there isn't any substantive or procedural change, not a discussion that needs to be had, they can go on the consent calendar and I won't get to stand here and present to you each and every change and every single word. So that was the purpose of writing that policy. We looked around, a lot of other districts in the state have a policy about how a board is going to go, go through and adopt policies. Um, the process is listed in the board and the entire purpose was just to try to expedite what we're doing. So that's the, um, new policy which we've given number eleven thirty-five. The other policy that's, uh, I'm first reading tonight is forty-four, forty-four thirty. And this is in conjunction with what Jen Warren was talking about, uh, regarding student surveys. She explained HP one eighty-two requires we have to have parent consent before we provide surveys to students, specific surveys. And so we already have a policy talking about information requests from students and, and surveying students. So we simply added to that policy, we re-formatted to align with what our other format looks like and added to that policy that if we're going to send out a survey on culture and climate, um, on the other types of surveys in HP one eighty-two, then we will send a consent form home to parents every year. So those are the two new policies. And the policies that were presented last week that we're gonna bring back to you for second reading is policy forty-six fifty, which is our homeschool policy. And that was created in order to, uh, implement some of the requirements from legislation and also create a process for how to implement or how to transfer a student from homeschool back into our school system. We didn't have any changes or any feedback on that policy from last month to this. The other policy that we're bringing back in second reading is eighty-three fifty, that's the student electronic device policy. And we did have quite a bit of feedback on that policy. Um, it was great feedback, we had a, um, system where both parents, teachers, even students, I think, provided feedback. Heather already compiled all of that into an enormous spreadsheet and tried to organize them by topic. So we got a lot of really good feedback, had some very robust discussions in our policy committee. And we did make some changes from last month to this. Um, one of the primary concerns in the feedback was what about smart watches for kids? How do we regulate that when a child, a six, seven-year-old has a smart watch? We decided amongst the committee and based on the feedback that smart watches may be worn, that the applications on the watch that are so distracting can't be used during instructional time. Um, we also determined based on some feedback from administrators that if an administrator wanted to impose more strict policies with regard to cellphone use in their school, they could. They didn't, they couldn't go any lighter, but they could, um, impose, for example, prohibitions of cellphone use during assemblies. Um, and then we had some feedback from teachers who said, "What do we do if a kid won't put their phone away or we wanna take their phone?" And, uh, wording that a student who doesn't comply with a request from a teacher to provide their phone, the student can be written up for insubordination. And if a teacher feels like he or she needs help getting a phone from a student who's violated the, the policy so many times that confiscation is warranted, that they would call an administrator rather than then put the teacher in that position to have to try to fight the kid to get the phone. And then last, we did have a couple of, uh, some concerns about maybe expanding some exceptions to the, the rules. Some teachers want to be able to use devices during the classroom day, um, for instructional time. And we determined that if the teacher clears it with the principal, then that ought to be okay on a very limited basis. And that, uh, we singled out WIC as a somewhat unique situation because they don't really have the same type of classroom instructional time as other schools do. And we added that administrators at Weber Innovation Center may define instructional time for their students. Those are the primary changes to policy eighty-three fifty and then.
Heidi, I was just gonna, the other thing that was discussed at last board meeting was the emergency, like when students could use their phone in an emergency. So I think we landed on something that makes sense. So it says, "Students will be instructed by teachers and/or administrators regarding permitted use of privately owned electronic devices during emergency situations."
That's right, thank you.
Yeah, there was the issue with medical emergencies versus like a school-wide emergency. So this would allow teachers to instruct their students without it being narrowly, or, or without causing too many exceptions to that emergency.
Right, thank you. Um, are there any questions about the cellphone policy? And that is actually the last policy that will be presented to the board on second reading. There are some policies that are on the consent calendar this, um, this month. And they are simply changes to wording in the policy due to legislation.
Can I just ask what's the homes for the memorial policy, you said we tabled it?
Yeah, we had it on first reading and then after first reading, we got a lot of feedback about, wait, we still need to walk through when and how we designate certain facilities as memorials and when we're gonna, how we want to walk through the naming of schools in particular. So we have a little bit of work to do on that one still.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to hearing from you.
Sure we do.
That finishes up our study session, uh, for this evening. We'll take a, a couple minute break and meet back here so we can get started at six o'clock. Thank you. Thank you.